Hi, welcome everyone. I'd like to call to order tonight's school committee meeting. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
It's all move.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Oh, actually, can we make it, we need to amend the...
You're not changing it.
We're gonna switch the order, okay. We're, um, we're actually going to have a presentation from the president of the Friends and Antica Public Schools first, so Eleanor, Anthony, if you can come join us, please.
Sit here. Does that work for you?
Yes, of course. Welcome, thank you for coming.
Hi Eleanor.
There. Have one hand out for you guys.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, don't have any fancy to project.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
So, thank you for having me again. I was here a couple of years ago when I was president, and now I'm back. So, there's not a whole lot that's remarkably different about what we do and who we are, except we have expanded our board membership. We've gained six new members this year, bringing us to thirty members, which is, I think, the highest number of members we've had in, over a decade. So, that's great, that's greater participation, and, you know, more people come onto the board, more people talk about us out in the world, and spread the word, and, you know, it just creates a wider ripple effect, which is wonderful. We have, we continue to have the same sort of funding streams that we've had, which primarily the Children's Fund, staff-initiated funding, and Teacher-Coach Fund, and then we have the Lunch Fairy Fund, which was started a couple of years ago, which, that, that we dip into technically really at the end of the year to make sure the kids can finish out the year without being hamstrung or encumbered by debt that we can help them with for, for meals here. The Children's Fund is still eighty-five dollars a year. One point it was two hundred, then we went down to seventy-five, and we went back up to eighty-five. We've, we stayed steady with eighty-five dollars a year per child, per academic year. It's needs-blind, the form is extremely simple for parents or guardians to fill out. I have people from all kinds of extracurricular organizations calling me saying, I can't, you know, parents can't manage it, can want, you know, anybody can fill it out. I have coaches filling it out, people running programs filling it out. And we, we, we give that once a year, goes to sports, it goes to music, it goes to sometimes a field trip, dance, any number of things that complements a student's, you know, development, that, and sometimes enhances their academic development as well. The staff-initiated funding is, I don't have the numbers in front of me unfortunately because I don't have a network, and I, I will admit that I didn't have time to, to print that out today, but we give in the, in the neighborhood of five thousand dollars a year to each school, and we like to have them have spent at least half of that by the March, like March fifteenth, March thirtieth, and they're doing a good job of that. And the elementary school tends to spend the most because they have, per capita, the most number of students, which makes a lot of sense, and that will probably continue to be the case, so, and anything that's not spent rolls over into the following year, which is pretty rarely the case, but sometimes there's a little bit left. And the Teacher-Coach Fund is something, we need to sort of finesse that a little bit, but that's for teachers to be able, and coaches for that matter, to be able to do, if something isn't fully covered by the budget, that's, you know, like continuing education or something that's going to enhance their teaching or coaching skills, that they need to do to go off-island for, for instance, and it's not fully covered by the budget, we will help with that up to a point. Two hundred dollars maximum. So, and other than that, so those are sort of our main funding streams. We spend on enrichment, we spend in the neighborhood of seventy-five hundred dollars a year. I stand corrected if somebody who's taking minutes might want to correct me. In the minutes, I let her please do so. And that is a huge effort on behalf of Logan O'Connor, who has been spearheading for longer than I've been on the board, all of our enrichment activities, which has over the years varied from, one mammoth effort was Rachel's Challenge about, I want to say, six years ago, and then we've had the Yellow Dress, we've, so we have theatrical performances, we have motivational speakers. She will work collaboratively with other organizations, nonprofit organizations on island that, that cater to children's, students' needs, like the Dreamland, and ASAP, and, and many, many others, to bring various events and programs here for both children and families. So, that's, I think, one of our most important things that we do. We still have five fundraising events. They continue to be the Bike-Athon for the, for the elementary school, which is in October, and that's a small event and very kind of cute and sweet, and all the kids come and they dress up and they bike up and down Surfside Road. It's not a race, it's a fundraising effort, and some kids go out and they come in with envelopes, you know, spilling over with pennies, and some kids go whole hog and hit people up all over town and come in with, you know, a thousand dollars. We raised, thanks to Fiona Johnson and her capable crew of Irish ladies, this year raised a lot of money. Every year the amount goes up, so that's, it's a small fundraiser, but significant, and it'll sort of gets us geared up for the year, you know, it's the beginning of the academic year. And then we have, of course, the House Tour, which is a huge effort, a lot of manpower goes into that, all hands-on-deck effort, and this year Hadley Dutra and Kate Bartleman co-chaired that, and we had, I think, eight, I lost track, to be honest, I think we had eight houses, maybe nine at one point, which is, it's tremendous. I ran it myself for a couple of years, and I had six houses, and getting the decorators, and I, I give them a lot of credit because it's just a ton of effort, and they put a lot of extra effort into it to make it more interesting and enhance it with different features this year, and we'll continue to do that. And we love that because we give discounts to staff teachers so that, to encourage them to come and enjoy it. And I love it because I, every year I'm outside, standing in, at the house, welcoming people, and I see the same people year after year, and I, I love that, including Kim Kubis, where is she? So, that's our biggest fundraiser probably financially, didn't used to be, but it is definitely now, although our summer fundraiser will, will probably come into its own eventually. So, after that, we have the Spelling Bee, which you all are, I'm sure, familiar with, my personal favorite, and I don't think that needs too much fleshing out. And then, and I know Dr. Lepre would like us to have that in the summer, I think that's a great idea, but another huge effort to get that organized, but hey, not saying no to it. And then we have the NES Dance, which we are now doing in June, we used to do it during TV turnoff week and sort of that time of year around MCAS, but now because of the building, what's been going on with the building and the construction and so forth, last year we did it at the Boys and Girls Club, which was fantastic, I mean, it was a great open space. I was kind of worried it might be too big and could we keep track of all the kids, but thanks to the Boys and Girls Club staff, and then our own people and parents who helped out, it, it went very well, knock on some wood somewhere, and the kids had a really good time, and it was a modest fundraiser, but really more about the community outreach and the fun, and all the families come out, and extended families, and you see little kids aren't even in school yet, and then, I mean, I just love that event, that's really a lot of fun. And Galen Gardner, every year we get a DJ in, and Galen has a theme, and the kids dress up, and there's different prizes for, you know, best dancing, best costume, best spirit, whatever. So, it's kind of like the Bike-Athon in terms of, you know, reward and good spirit, community spirit, school spirit. And then finally, we have our, now what we call the Motion Picks Drive-In Event, which has, again, Logan spearheaded that, and we bring in an inflatable screen out to the Tom Nevers Field, and that's a growing event, this will be, I think, our third year. And it used to be our biggest fundraiser financially in the summer, it was a completely different event back in the day, and now we have morphed it into something that we can, we do, we have more involvement with because it was sort of turned over to a third party before, and we didn't like that, so we wanted to be more, you know, our own hands-on experience with this, so, and it's, it takes a lot of effort, there's a lot of, a lot of steps and stages to it. Laura Ramo, who's been fantastic, helps us a lot with that, without her it really wouldn't have happened last year. And she's thankfully agreed to do it again, so I just have to find someone to help her. Any takers? So, that'll be again in, in August. I don't have the date right off the bottom, top of my head, but it'll be on our website, which has a lot of, thanks to Hadley Dutra, that has pretty much all, we keep it pretty well updated on, in terms of upcoming events, past events, we have, you know, Laurie Richards is our resident photographer, and she, we have the photo stream up there, we need to probably like change, swap them out because she takes hundreds of wonderful photos. So, we will have updates on exactly what the date is, but I'm pretty sure it's going to be the second, the ninth of August, thank you, minutes taker. The ninth of August, which is a Thursday, right? Or is it a Wednesday? Wednesday, I'm sorry. So, and then our rain date would be the Thursday, which is what we had on deck last year. I don't know what the film will be, you'll have to wait. So, I always vote for Caddyshack, but I always get shot down. So, that's pretty much where we are, you know, we're evolving in terms of growing bigger and getting more people involved, and a slightly younger board now, which I think is great. It tends to be that the parents who want to be involved have younger students, I mean, I came on when my kids were in elementary school, and I, I don't know what exactly to attribute that to, I guess we're more involved when our kids are younger, and as they get older, it makes sense that we sort of are told to step back, and so we do. But I have a kid in each school this year, and I'm continuing to be involved, and I, you know, sometimes I contemplate stepping down, and then I say, I can't, I can't do that, it's too important, so. At any rate, it's a wonderful organization, I'm very proud to be a part of it, this is, I think, my eighth year, I've lost track. Logan's been on it longer than I have by about a decade, and I can, I hope to continue to be involved, and I thank you all for all of your support, and all of the principals as well, and assistant principals, so.
Well, thank you so much.
Any questions?
Do you have any questions or comments?
I do, if I may.
Absolutely.
First of all, thank you, your enthusiasm is infectious, and really, it's, and thank you for the work that you do. I just have a couple of questions. I'm curious if, and you may not know this tonight, but do you know how many children apply for the Children's Fund?
That is actually, well, all told, we won't know until, and we actually go through the summer, so it's the full academic year, including the summer, so the final tally would be, and I can certainly send that to you at the end of the summer, but it includes summer programs, you know, camps and things. So, the final tally will be available as of, you know, August thirty-first or whatever. But at this stage in time, Janice, our wonderful secretary, just did a calculation, and she, she says today eighty-five students, this was two weeks ago, so, and I have signed some checks since then, so I'm going to, I'm going to bump that up to about a hundred because lacrosse and, and soccer have, you know, we've had some people sign up for that, and as well as a couple of trips off-island, so that's probably going to go up to a hundred and fifty, I would think.
That's usually typical.
Yeah, that's pretty typical. And then if you ever want to check in with us and ask about that stuff, we're happy to give that to you, obviously no names, but numbers are something we'd be glad to, to share.
I'm curious, is it one of, and I, and I love it that it's across the board for anyone to apply.
It does, sort of, it's a pretty steady number, but I would say it's been increasing incrementally in, in, you know, small increments since I've been involved with Friends and signing the checks, to be honest, I think it's been going up, but that's, that's great, that's, that's a reflection of our population increase, as well as the willingness of people to sign their kids up for these amazing, amazing extracurricular activities we have. I mean, we're so fortunate on this tiny island, when I moved here, I'm not going to say how many years ago, but I was like, oh my God, how am I going to survive here, there's nothing cultural going on for the kids, there's so much, there's so much available for us, so...
My final question is, how do you choose your enrichment? I, I know you do different enrichments for the different schools, I'm just curious what that process is.
Well, we completely defer to Logan because she's truly, she, honestly, she does a lot of research, she spends many, many, many hours outside of her work hours, obviously, to research available opportunities, she networks with other people in other school systems and people she knows, and she's got a pretty vast network now. And then she, she, she's all sort of scoping out what's out there. So, honestly, she brings it to us, and we've never said no to anything she's offered us because it's always been a great idea, I mean, we, she, she sort of whittles it down to the things she thinks that would complement the curriculum, whether it's in high school in terms of like the Holocaust curriculum, or in eighth grade, or, or whatever the curriculum is, history, sciences, or whatever, she, she tries to align it with that, and have it be something that will supplement, complement, enhance all of that. And then there's stuff that's just plain fun, and then there's things that has, that would, you know, the motivational speakers are a key thing, especially in today's age with all the crazy things that are going on out there, that have potentially negative impacts on our children, that we need to keep an eye on. So, frankly, we defer to Logan, she does all the research, she does all the hard, hard footwork that's involved with that, and we trust her completely, and it's never turned out anything but terrific, so.
Great, thank you.
We'll probably continue to do that.
Now, each year at Spelling Bee, they announce how much you've contributed to the children and, and schools, and am I right that it's...
Over the course of the last thirty years?
Yes, that it's, was it two million?
Two million, yeah.
Yeah.
It's probably more, to be honest.
And so I think that needs to be said, because that's just a remarkable amount that enhances the education for our children.
Yeah, and we, you know, we really try and keep, I mean, there is no overhead with us, we have a secretary, and she, she really is worth everything, I mean, she's, helps us tremendously keep things organized, and she does the bookkeeping, and I turn to her for every little thing, she's fantastic, so we wouldn't be able to function without her, her name's Janice. But other than that, overhead-wise, we really don't have anything other than the cost inherent in whatever fundraisers, and we try and keep that at a minimum. Our members are fantastic about going out and soliciting the amazing people on this island who are willing to give us donate things, or reduce costs for, for various things, so, you know, where we can, we reduce costs to, to whittle them down to nil if we can, so that we can really rake in as much as we possibly can for, for the Children's Fund, and the staff-initiated funding, and the Lunch Fairy Fund, and all the, and enrichment, so it's, it's a lot of hard work, but it's definitely worth it.
Thank you very much. Logan? Yes?
I'm in the chair to say that principals too, I've asked staff and principals to come to me if they have ideas, or people they know, or programs that they've seen or come across, because that's always very important to get their lens. And the other piece that I just wanted to add is that the Friends has brought in over two million dollars into school, and this year I think we're up to about two twenty, I think, so it's, it's pretty tremendous over the years.
Yeah.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your hard work, and thank you for presenting tonight.
My pleasure.
Okay, moving on to the Quiz Bowl. I say this with a bit, we're going to need to have a few more, yeah, we've got to beef up our side here, our team a little bit, any volunteers?
Okay. You need, you need two people to join the...
Please, somebody come join us.
John, Peter, Kim.
Or I can stay up here and join you if...
Yes, please.
Unless you have a preference.
Joy or rushing.
You moved on.
Okay.
Stay up there, Mike.
Okay. Because this is like, this is murderer's row here, I think Dr. Lepre's going to need help.
Are you staying?
I'll stay, yeah, yeah.
You can take my seat if you want.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two types of questions, ones, the first twenty are a little bit longer, the second are in short groups of three.
On your team?
Twenty of each, in each session. There's no penalty for wrong answers, other than if one team answers it wrong, the other team gets to hear the question, and, you know, they get a shot at it. You may ring in early.
Can we talk amongst ourselves here, or no?
Oh, we can't, we, oh, we're, it's not teamwork, okay.
We, I don't know.
No consultation.
No consultation.
It's clear the consensus here.
I was just asking the question, don't get snuck in.
I always like to verify.
The pressure is already on me.
All right.
Okay.
Yes.
And you have that right. The Jeannie Johnston had a perfect safety record while transporting refugees of this event, who often fled in coffin ships. Superism was the practice of providing food and Protestant teaching to Catholic children who suffered in this event.
The Irish famine.
That is correct. Also caused a potato. The speaker of this poem, quote, "Knowing how way..." Wow, that, this is a misprint. I, no, maybe it's all right, maybe not, maybe not, I misread it to myself. The speaker of this poem, quote, "Knowing how way leads on to way," end quote, believes...
Robert Frost.
I'm going to repeat the whole question for the other team. Knowing how way leads on to way, believes he, quote, "Shall be telling with a sigh somewhere ages and ages hence." This poem describes, quote, "Leaves no step untried in black on a path less traveled Name this Robert Frost poem.
The Road Not Taken?
Correct. This country lies southeast of Major, the French Departement, that is claimed by Comerops. While it itself was under French control, this country became known as the Malagasy Republic for two decades.
Madagascar?
That is correct. An ideal gas of these particles cooled near absolute zero shows quantum effects on a large scale. The W and Z particles are subtypes of these particles that carry the weak force. And in 2013, the Large Hadron Collider tentatively confirmed the existence of one of these particles that carries mass. Name these elementary particles with integer spin contrasted with fermions and exemplified by the mass-carrying Higgs type.
Bosons.
That is correct.
Well, they said, they said hadron collider.
Sorry.
You got that from Big Bang Theory.
A scout quit his job when Houston didn't pick this player, number one overall, in 1992. In 2011, he homered off David Price for his three-thousandth hit. A recording of Bob Shepherd's voice introduced this player's home at bats, including... That is correct. In one work by this author, the fake doctor, Calamoco, tricks Nysia and sleeps, sleeps with his wife, Lucrezia. This author of the mandrake praised Roman Republics, and in other work compared fortune to a lady who must be beaten. He noted Cesare Borja as a rare case of six, a successful ruler who gained power through luck rather than force, as it is, quote, "Safer to be feared."
Machiavelli.
That is correct. Ireland's giant Causeway consists of hexagonal columns of this type of rock.
Basalt.
Okay, igneous, but basalt was accepted. This man stabbed Henry Rathbone to begin his escape. Boarding house owner Mary Surat was one of four people hanged for conspiring with this man.
John Wilkes Booth?
That is correct. Both ammonia and this element bond to platinum in the chemotherapy drug, I don't know if I'm pronouncing this, Kissplatin?
Sisplatin.
Sisplatin, thank you, Doctor. The insecticide DDT contains carbon, hydrogen, and this element. An acid of this element combines with nitric acid to give aclyuregia. That acid is also found in the stomach and is commonly used in titration. Name this element commonly used to clean swimming pools.
Chlorine.
That is correct. On the right side of this painting is a red barn, and on the left, a green railing car can be seen.
American Gothic?
That is correct.
You can buzz that in.
Mine's not working.
We sabotage many of them. In one novel by this author, George Ponderevo, Ponderevo, helps his uncle sell the title fake drug, Tonobunge. He wrote about Predrick, an human-animal hybrids in the island of Doctor Moreau. In one novel, the protagonist loses an Eloi named Wiina in a fire he sets to escape.
H2Ols?
That is correct. In Judaism, one of these creatures is a transformed man named Enoch, and another creature of this type stood in the way of Balam's donkey. Two of these creatures visited lots homes before the destruction of Sodom. These creatures are organized into, quote, "hosts," which include seraphim and cherubim. Name these holy beings whose leaders include Michael.
Angels.
Correct. In this leader's farewell address, he noted that until World War II, quote, "American makers of plowshares could make swords as well." He used the army to DC.
Eisenhower.
That is correct. Due to this country's nearly two billion dollar debt, Gazprom shut off delivery of natural gas in June 2000.
Ukraine.
That is correct. The title object of this musical composition is forged by Alberic. Its composer built a theater in Beroy specifically to host this work, which takes sixteen hours to perform over four nights. It ends with Brünnielda riding into a funeral pyre and the burning of the Hall of the Gods. Siegfried and Gaudammaron make up two of the four cycles of this epic...
Gondemary.
No. This, two of the four cycles of this cycle opera written by Richard...
The Ring?
More complete? It's either got to be the Ring Cycle or the Ring of Meadol. If you put them together. This author wrote about an old woman who refused payment to a thieving doctor because she couldn't see her belongings. In other stories by this man, a mouse saves a lion from hunters, and a farmer kills a goose that lays golden eggs.
Esape.
That is correct. These mathematical objects have inverses, if and only if they are bijective. In one of, I'm sorry, if one of these objects is, quote, "onto," then its entire range is covered. If it is, quote, "one-to-one," it can pass the horizontal line test in a...
Function?
That is correct. Levels of this molecule...
Wait a minute, who's, who's light was that? Because mine was, mine was blinking red.
Oh, well.
And what would your answer be, sir?
I'm not a complete idiot. Michael, did you have the right answer?
No.
I was a good listener.
Yes.
I was trying to say proportion.
Okay.
Honesty, that becomes the...
We're modeling virtue.
That's right, that's right.
Levels of this molecule in the liver are reduced by an HMG-CoA reductase inhibitor known as a statin. This molecule...
Cholesterol.
That is correct. The exile Hippias advised the losing side in this battle, whose men panicked and ran into swamps. The winning general of this battle, really, oh boy, Milt Teides organized troops to defend only...
Marathon.
Correct. This goddess turned the spilled blood of her lover into sea anemones after he was killed by a boar. This goddess, who was worshiped by Scythia, was offered to a misshapen god, but her infidelity was exposed by Helios. She was the lover of Adonis and was trapped by her husband when this mother of arrows had an affair with Ares.
Aphrodite.
That is correct. That's the end of that type of question. Do we have a score check?
Them have ten, and us has eight.
Well, that's all right.
We're doing, the lightning.
Switch teams. Not, not yet, unless you feel... In this, there'll be three quick questions around a, a single thought, okay? This god was the father of Thor.
Odin.
Who rang it first, okay? Odin's steed was this eight-legged horse who was born after Loki turned himself into a mare to distract Zvi Ilfarin from constructing Asgard's walls. Slight near? Odin was served by two of these dark birds.
Ravens.
That is correct. Another group. This composer can never... Though Somalia has clashed with this neighbor country in the past, they have recently collaborated on joint attacks against Al-Shabaab, who attacked the Westgate Mall in this country's city of Nairobi.
Kenya.
Kenya is correct. In one work by this author, Tom Canty and Edward VI switched places, and both are accused of insanity. Identify this author of The Prince and the.
Mark Twain.
Correct. Twain wrote this novel about Hank Morgan, a fairly ordinary American who wakes up in medieval England and uses his superior knowledge of science to gain.
A Connecticut Yankee.
That's correct. In this Twain short story, Simon Wheeler tells a story about the title animal when the narrator asks for information about Leonidas W. Smiley. The celebrated jumping frog.
Caliban.
Okay. Should we switch now, I think? Okay. Are we gonna call this a score or is it gonna be total? What would you?
Oh, we're switching teams. Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So. I know. Should we switch?
Sophie, you can say.
We're switching, I guess. I don't feel like I would.
I don't know. I don't care. I really don't care.
Oh, my God.
You want, you sure, Sophie? Okay. I don't know. Sophie, I've certainly known. I've known.
Fancy at this desk.
Which one is mine?
My new Machiavelli.
Oh, I thought there was another scene. There could be more.
If I whisper something, it just has a buzz in for me and I'll say.
Kind of the rules, do you understand? We're all there.
That's me.
Okay. We're back to the first type of question where it's a bit longer. It's only one question. And again, you can ring in before it's complete. A wrong answer will give the opposite team the right to hear the whole question. Okay. John Keats wrote a poem about George Chapman's translation of this author, who wrote about unfortunate characters who eat Helios's cattle in one of his works. This author wrote about the wrath of Achilles and about Penelope, the mother of Telemachus, who undoes her weaving every night as she waits for her husband to return.
Homer?
That is correct. This ruler was supported and succeeded by the vizier I, the successor of Smenchara.
King Tut?
That is correct. One form of this action, fajur, consists of two rock. Oh, man. Pre kaat before sunrise. The adhan is a call by the muzin for people to perform this action, which is preceded by wudu, a ritual washing. This action led in conquest.
Prayer?
That is correct. One king of this name was arrested in Varen while fleeing from a revolt. An earlier king of this name was a child when the nobles rose against him in the Fron uprising. The House of Tapet included, or tapet, included five kings of this name. The last king of this name took power in 1814 in the Bourbon Restoration. And the longest-serving king of this name was named.
Louis?
Louis is correct. The sun king.
On the board.
We shall.
This number is squared in the solution to the basal problem. One experiment to calculate this number exploits the buffoon's needle problem. Archimedes approximated this number, the number of radians in 180 degrees.
Pi?
Correct. Clara sings that fish are jumping and the cotton is high in this composer's song Summertime.
George Gershman.
That is correct. In this word, David Gama tries to teach beavers to sing songs. And Hayward pretends to be a medicine man so that he can rescue Alice. Cora Monroe is captured by Madgu, who killed.
The last of the Mohicans.
That is correct. The instinctive palmar grasp reflex is this type of behavior in human babies. And Robert Weathersham mistakenly included the pineal gland in his list of 86 of these structures. The muscles that cause goosebumps may be this type of organ, as are Kiwi's wings and pelvic bones of whales. The human tailbone and appendix.
Cartilage?
I'm gonna finish for the other team. The human tailbone and appendix are examples of.
Distigil, organs.
That is correct.
Good effort, good effort.
No.
Eli was the center of this goddess's cult. This goddess made a snake out of earth to bite Ra, which forced Ra to give up his true name. This goddess searched for a tamarisk tree to find her dead husband after he was tricked by scent. She later reassembled 13 pieces of that husband to make him the god of the dead. Name this Egyptian goddess, the mother of Horus and the wife of Osiris.
Isis?
Isis is correct. The Duong-Pedant Law approximates the heat capacity of materials in this phase. Silicon dioxide can be an example of the amorphous type of this phase during which sublimation can occur.
Solid?
That is correct.
Getting smoked.
In this battle, Joshua Chamberlain ordered a bayonet charge to defend a hill. Richard Ewell assaulted but failed to take Culp's hill on each of the three days of this battle.
Gettysburg?
Gettysburg is correct.
I'm here.
A character in this work refuses a marriage proposal from Sinjin and doubts Alice Fairfax, who blames strange sounds on Grace Poole. Mr. Bucklehurst causes the death of Ellen Burns, whom the protagonist meets at Lowood School.
Jane Eyre.
That is correct. In the background of this painting, a group of four men wearing red hats are rowing a boat. In this painting, a mayor plays a trumpeter behind two soldiers who are walking away from the viewer. A little girl in white looks directly at the viewer, and a woman in the foreground of this large painting walks a monkey on a leaf. Painted with uniformly sized dots of color rather than brushstrokes. What pointillist painting by Georges Sarat, or Sarat? What is this painting by Georges Sarat?
Just saying. I don't know. I don't know.
Sunday afternoon on the island of La Borgia.
Seen it. It's in the Artist's Chicago. I've seen it.
It's pretty matching.
The pair instability type of this event was observed for the first time in 2006. Cassae and the Crab Nebula are remnants of these energetic events that can occur when a white dwarf exceeds.
Supernova?
Thank you. I couldn't pronounce the next word, so you bailed me out. Supernova's correct. Alvaro Wu-Seraphina with the title object in this author's The Rose Tattoo. This man wrote The Night of the Iguana and a work in which Jim Lawrence breaks the horn of Laura Winfield's unicorn. In another of his plays, the protagonist loses Belle Reeve and Stanley Kowalski fights with his sister-in-law.
Tennessee Williams?
That is correct. In August 2014, four firefighters in Chambersville, Kentucky, helping with this action were injured by a power line. Critics of this action noted that only 28% of the money is spent on research. Patrick Stewart silently poured himself a drink to perform this action while President Obama wrote a $100 check as his response. Name this viral challenge to donate money.
Ice Bucket Challenge?
That's correct.
Yes.
This speech notes that America has given a bad check, quote, bad check, but its speaker refuses to believe that.
Martin Luther King's I Had a Dream speech?
That is correct. Avulsion is causing the Achafalaya River to gain volume from this river. One bend in this river forms an exclave of Fulton County, Kentucky, and it was said to flow backward during the New Madrid earthquake.
Mississippi.
That is correct. The Spitzer Telescope operates in this range of the light spectrum. This region of light is used in spectroscopy to measure vibrating bonds. William Herschel discovered this non-visible type of light from the sun.
Ultraviolet?
No, I will continue.
Infrared?
Yeah. In a pair of works by this author, Timaeus describes the origin of the universe and Critias details the history of Atlantis. He wrote Calipolis, an ideal city-state where philosopher kings rule, in a work that seeks to define justice for individuals and the city-state. Name this ancient Greek philosopher, a teacher of Aristotle, author of dialogues like the Republic.
The one that starts with a P.
The one that starts with a P?
Yeah.
Anything more?
Can we?
Nope.
Other team?
Plato.
Plato. It wasn't Pocretis, it was Plato. How are we doing for time, Michael?
A couple minutes?
Okay. We'll do some of the groups of three now.
How bad is the score?
Oh, you want a score?
Do you wanna know? Yes.
12 to 7.
So you're gonna ask at least six more questions?
This man promoted Usonian architecture and was a strong proponent of the prairie school style. Name this American architect who created the Tokyo Imperial Hotel and Robey House.
Frank Lloyd Wright.
That is correct. Wright can levered portions of this prairie school house over a river in Pennsylvania.
Falling water.
That is correct. Wright planned many of his designs from this Wisconsin studio named for a Welsh bard. He later designed a west studio with this name in Arizona. I'm not sure I'm pronouncing this correctly. Taliesin?
Taliesin.
Taliesin. This Royal Navy commander first appeared in the novel Casino Royale.
James Bond.
In this author's novel, The Secret Adversary, the detectives Tommy and Tuppence work with British intelligence against Mr. Carter. This author also created the detectives Hercule Paul and Miss Marple. Dame Agatha Christie.
I'm sorry for that.
This British author based his novel Ashendim, or The British Agent, on the time he spent as a secret agent. He also wrote about the club-footed Philip Carey of Human Bondage.
Somerset Maugham?
That's correct. A July 2014 report on 538.com found that the Pythagorean expected record of Rhett Klotsch's Washington Generals was equal to their actual record, roughly six wins and 14,000 losses. First, the Washington Generals are the traditional opponent.
Harlem Globetrotters.
That's correct.
Wasn't sure what the question was gonna be.
This statistician analyzed the Harlem Globetrotters for his website, 538.com.
Nate Silver.
Yeah.
Sorry.
In 2014, 538.com transitioned from The New York Times to this sports.
ESPN.
That is correct. Okay, I wanna thank everyone. I thought everybody would.
Well done.
Well, 14 to 12.
Cut off. With the school committee winning first and the kids running the session.
Well done, guys.
Good job, good job.
Guys, for the record, why don't we come out and all introduce?
Yes, I would love it if you could give us your names.
Everybody on the podium, if they line up back here, I can give them a mic.
Okay. And we'll just, I'll get this.
I have to say, I am so impressed. Can you please, yes, thank you. Thank you for coming. Can you please share with us your name and your grade, please?
Oh, I'm so, I'm a senior, so cool.
Okay.
I'm Harrison and I'm a senior.
I'm Grace Bartlett and I'm a senior.
I'm Stephane Salario, I'm a senior.
I'm Evan Porzalari and I'm a senior.
I'm Dina Weatherly and I'm a junior.
I'm Nicole LeBlanc and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Isaiah Williams and I'm a junior.
I'm Liam Pennone and I'm a junior.
Thank you so much. We have a couple of questions for you, actually, if you don't mind. Not quiz related, yeah.
What is the process? How long have you been practicing and then when is the actual quiz?
The actual quiz was in November.
We were late. We had to push them off, I'm sorry.
We go pretty much the whole school year, meet once a week for an hour, just do questions like this. And our main competition is Super Sunday at WGBH for High School Quiz Show.
Okay, I want to thank everyone. I thought they everybody would be great. Nice job. Nice job. Well done.
Thank you.
Well, 14 to 12. Cut up. It's a tie overall with the school committee winning first and the kids winning the session.
Well done, guys.
Good job. Good job.
Guys, let's go to the record. Why don't we come out and all introduce?
Yes, I would love it if you could give us your names.
Everybody on the phone.
If they line up back here, I can give them a mic.
Okay. And we'll just...
I have to say, I am so impressed. Yes. Can you please? Yes. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Can you please share with us your name and your grade, please?
Oh, I'm so... I'm a senior. I'm so cool.
Okay.
I'm Harrison and I'm a senior.
I'm Grace Bartlett and I'm a senior.
I'm Stephane Salerio. I'm a senior.
I'm Evan Borzlerio. I'm a senior.
I'm Dina Weatherly and I'm a junior.
I'm Nicole LeBlanc and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Isaiah Williams and I'm a junior.
I'm Liam Penon and I'm a junior.
Thank you so much. We have a couple of questions for you, actually, if you don't mind. Not quiz-related, yet.
What is the process? How long have you been practicing and then when is the actual quiz?
The actual quiz was in November.
We were late. We had to push them off. I'm sorry.
We go pretty much the whole school year. Meet once a week for an hour, just do questions like this. And our main competition is Super Sunday at WGBH for High School Quiz Show, which NHS was on the show many years ago.
It wasn't many. It wasn't many.
It was our freshman.
It was our freshman.
Yeah, okay. But I would guess that this year's team, probably five more right answers?
Were it not for us.
And they would have made the TV show. They're in the top order and they compete against 120 private parochial and public schools from all over the state. No, you know, there's no Division One, Division Four, and I'm very, very proud of our students every year because we are in the running every year.
That's cool.
And we belong there. And we'll be on TV again.
Very good. Good job. Thank you so much. And thank you, Mr. Panchi and Ms. Hickson. Yes? Thank you very much.
You want to get them out?
What show was that? I was interested in them.
Thank you.
I was in high school. I was on the side.
I knew I was...
It's not like they...
Oh, no.
And we were on TV. We were on TV.
No.
When you got off, you were winning.
I still remember the answer that I got wrong. Oh, don't you always? I was spelling it and he had it every month. My first question, my mother bagged my father the ball and he, it was from the Red Sox.
Yeah, but somewhere on TV.
Yes, yes, yes.
It was the word cat. They gave it a C in the T.
The funny thing, you'll love it, is the first word was green. And I said, yeah, I'd be fine. This is a dog. But...
Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I went down, I heard my father say, can I go find that?
Thank you very much, Mr. Panchi.
That was fun. We're going to do this once a month.
Once a month, yeah, okay. All right, Mr. Bucky, can you please come up with the Nantucket High School graduation rate report? Thank you.
Somewhat odd, but this is less stressful than it was.
Yes, it is.
So normally, this isn't my favorite report, dropout report, graduation report, but this year, it really is exciting news to report. So you have that with the beautiful cover photo done by our retiring assistant principal, Mr. Lucchini, so I want to give him props for the cover photo.
Beautiful.
The state provides you an overview. Because I have been actively listening at the last couple of school committee meetings, I know that you want to dig deeper into the data. So the second page takes that kind of aggregate data that you see on the first page and breaks it down by all students, high needs, economically disadvantaged, many of the subcategories that you see on MCAS. Normally, I don't like reporting year-to-year comparisons unless it serves us well, and this year, it serves us very well. Last year, we reported 12 dropouts. This year, the data has seven, but when I dug a little deeper into that and looked at some of the information, some of the coding that we did did not accurate accurately capture. So we really only have four students who dropped out. So, you know, that's a two-thirds drop from the year before. I'm going to credit that to the grassroots, classroom teachers who notice and care, make referrals to the guidance department. The guidance department then follows up with families. John Lucchini and I meet with the school counselors every Monday morning at nine o'clock. That information is then taken twice a month to our larger student support services group, which is the principal, the assistant principal, the three school counselors, the director of special services, our school resource officer, the school psychologist, the school social worker, Andrew Vasselli, and the student success program, the school nurse. So there are so many safety nets that I think that that's how you go from, in a year's time, 12 students dropping out to four. So the next page, I've talked to you about, I am not a mathematician, a statistician, and the calculations that the state does for four-year group and then adjusted four-year group, a five-year cohort, the adjusted five-year cohort, just captures what you got on the first page for the students who dropped out, looking at the students who have been here starting in their ninth grade year and then graduate in four years, or transferred into the district and graduate in four years. So I'm not going to bore you with a lot of detail on that. If you have questions about it, I'm certainly happy to answer that. And then the last page is information that you have found helpful and illuminating in the past, and I just wanted to draw to your attention the three students that weren't captured accurately in the data. And so when you see those averages at the bottom, that represents the four who were actually calculated dropouts from the high school. And again, the data isn't surprising that they tend to drop out earlier in their ninth and 10th grade year. They tend not to have been here for the long haul. And they tend to drop out when the credit picture is bleak. If you're a 19-year-old and you have nine and a half credits, you're looking at three additional years. 22 and still being in high school doesn't calculate for a lot of them. But I will, again, go back to our educational success program and Andrew Vasselli on working with students that are coming in from the middle school that might be in jeopardy or on a trajectory not to be successful in high school and putting in programming that makes sense for them and doing some online coursework, doing some vocational courses, going out into the general education groups for what they can. And that is a very organic program and it changes as the students' needs change.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Just to comment, just, and I think kudos goes to Dr. Bucky for being creative and supportive of that program because I know it comes to you and you make those decisions with Andrew Vasselli. So without your leadership and support, that program wouldn't be successful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the audit report, may we have Martin join us, the director of finance? Hi, Martin.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good evening, everyone. So this is the yearly compliance audit of the end-of-year report that we have to file by March 31st. It has to be filed, actually, by the auditors. So they reviewed our report and there is two findings this year, unfortunately. There is a compliance item number six relating to a figure that is provided to us by the town. This is for employer retirement contributions. That figure is actually needed to be changed by approximately $17,000. The change has been done and filed. We have communicated with the finance department of the town. They agree with the change, so it was filed. The second item is compliance item number 12, and it relates to a change in the accounting method used for our special revenue funds. In the past, the old school accounts have been reported on using the modified accrual method. And in simple terms, this includes all the actual fiscal year expenses plus all the outstanding obligations relating to that fiscal year that carry forward into the future year. From this year moving forward, we are advised that we have to apply the cash method of accounting, and this is the accounting method that's being used by the town, to our special revenue funds. Our special revenue funds include revolving accounts such as the community school, our gift accounts, the athletic fund, the school lunch revolving account, and so on. So moving forward, they want us to report on a cash basis, meaning what cleared in the span of the fiscal year. If obligations came over from a prior fiscal year and cleared into this fiscal year, they want it reported this year. The outstanding obligations that relate to the current fiscal year and carry forward will be subsequently reported in next year's report. So that is the adjustment that's being done. We have accepted the changes of the athletic revolving account and the school lunch. I have applied it and filed it. It's been accepted by the Department of Education. So these are the two findings of the report for fiscal year 16.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Thank you for explaining this to us. Thank you. Do you need me to read this, the acknowledgement of the receipt?
I don't think so. I think that it will come under the vote here.
Oh, okay. Oh, perfect. Okay. All right, comments from the public tonight? Any comments? No comments? Moving on to votes to be taken. All right, here we go. May I have a vote to approve the FY 2016 end-of-year audit report from Roselli, Clark, and Associates?
Second.
All in favor? On motion...
Jen, you probably have to read this now.
Yeah, I'm going to. Thank you. On motion duly made and seconded, it was voted to accept the Roselli, Clark, and Associates' end-of-year financial compliance audit of FY 2016. Thank you. All right. A vote to approve the MASK survey participation. Did you have a chance to review the questions and comments?
I did not, and I don't know if this is on the timing thing, if we're on the time...
What is the timeline?
I think you would want to vote because the MCAS is underway. And so I can share a couple of thoughts. The administrative team has talked about this as well, and I did provide the student questionnaire for grades five, eight, and 10. Many of the questions are fairly benign. It would inform us about how often students use computers. So some of the information, I think, would be helpful. However, some of the information may be less well-received, and I think some of the concerns that we had, two of the concerns that we had. One, I didn't like the idea that the answers were A, B, C, D, which strikes me as a grading. And where might the Department of Ed be going with how they would report that out? Now, maybe that's because I'm a little jaded at this point. But I think the bigger reason might be that they say that this information will not be released because it does identify individual students. And my concern is that if that information should be requested through, you know, freedom of information, you know, what's to keep the newspapers from receiving that information and using it for some purpose that we would be, you know, loathe to see? And I think, finally, the other thing that I heard from the administration was, you know, on top of how many days of testing, which everybody has sort of, you know, hit the limit, then to have to go through the student questionnaire and, you know, in the case of fifth graders, are they sophisticated enough to be able to respond to some of the questions? So I think the general feeling of the administrative team would be that we don't participate in that. But I don't know if you want to entertain individual school committee or administrators' thoughts on this.
I have done a lot of thinking about this, and I'm a parent of a fifth grader and an eighth grader and read the questions. And I know how exhausting it is for the students to sit there and try their best for this time, you know, a two-hour timeframe for this test. And then I'm looking and I'm thinking, 24 questions for fifth graders after this test or 37 questions for eighth graders, 38 for 10. And after reading the questions, I just don't know, especially at the fifth grade level, how accurate they would be after sitting there for two hours taking a test that were asking them to work their hardest and stay focused, how accurate the results would be. And I don't know how these results would serve our district any good. I really don't. I received an email from Peter after our last meeting talking about there was a survey going out. Can you remind me the name? It's a, what do you call it? It's a...
It's a PRIDE survey. It replaces the old Youth Risk Behavior surveys that were done in the past.
Right. And many of the questions are similar to the questions they would ask on the MASK survey, and I think those would, surveys done locally here in our district would serve our district better. So I would like to opt out of the survey participation.
Yep. I had to have done a lot of the reading on the list and listened to different people's opinions. And first, I was thinking, well, okay, I didn't get to read all of the questions, but I'm not comfortable having students' identity being attached to the question.
Exactly.
And I agree with you, after coming off of a high-stakes test, the last thing we want to do is input our kids through another barrage of questions.
Right. And I think the results would be skewed, honestly, because of the fact that they're just coming off of this test.
And I agree. I think the question is, like, the PRIDE is going to serve us much better.
Mm-hmm.
So I wouldn't support.
All right, so how, do you want to comment?
I agree with the guys.
Okay. So can we vote to opt out of the MASK survey participation? All right, may I have a vote to opt out of the MASK survey participation?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. The CPS overnight field trip to the Nantucket Shipwreck and Life Saving Museum, do you want to talk about this at all?
Peter, would you like to talk about it? The field trip to the museum? Sorry.
Sure, you can make them up there.
Sure, if you want. That would be great.
So as part of our oceanography course in eighth grade, Dr. Bartley has been seeking out some possible field trip opportunities and some ideas to get kids out of the school and into some just hands-on experiences. I actually love the way that she's presented this to you as a night of hands-on adventures, which is basically what it's going to be. So it's in, is it in fourth grade when the students go to the Whaling Museum and do an overnight there? This is sort of the next step in that journey. It would be at the Shipwreck and Life Saving Museum, and the kids would go through a series of events that they don't know what's coming and when overnight. It'd be, they'd be well-supervised and the chaperones would not be sleeping, but the students would be sleeping in shifts and then they would be awakened throughout the night and have to react and problem-solve and do some pretty cool things. Egan Maritime has extended their staff to a new gentleman, Orion...
Cooling.
Cooling, who's like, I kind of wish he was here because he's like this larger-than-life character who is really excited about this and he's going to be a big part of it, and it should be a nice opportunity for our kids.
Great, thank you. And this is extracurricular? It's not mandatory or...
Not mandatory. We'll see what kind of interest there is and then see if we do, you know, more than one night.
Perfect. I just have a quick question. This is the sleeping arrangements, or is this just a discrepancy? On this form here, the Nantucket Public School Form, it says that they will sleep in separate rooms, boys and girls, and then in the description, it says that they will not be separated. Can you just speak to that? Which one it is?
That they will not.
They will not be separated. Okay. All right. May I have a motion to approve the CPS overnight field trip to the Nantucket Shipwreck and Life Saving Museum?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
May I have a vote to approve the gift donation from Egan Maritime Institute to the CPS Student Activities Account in the amount of $2,025?
I don't have a quorum.
Right.
I don't have a quorum for this.
So we will table the vote, the next two votes, D and E. May we have a motion to adopt these new policies? We have AE Commitment to Accomplishment.
No problem.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
BBA, School Committee Powers and Duties. This was, do you want to speak to this?
Sure. I would... I was asked to research this. I was in touch with Glenn Kuchar. He said that it is, the amended part in red is something that you should vote on, but it doesn't really have to change your practice in terms of taking the recommendation of the superintendent.
Perfect.
You wouldn't have to interview...
For the school nurse.
For those positions, but it is in the statute.
For the school physician, school nurse, yeah.
No.
Okay.
It's just an interesting...
It is, yeah. It surprised me, actually. So may I have a motion to amend BBA, School Committee Powers and Duties?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to approve BID, School Committee Member Compensation and Expenses?
No approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to approve BJ, School Committee Legislative Program?
No approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to approve BK, School Committee Memberships?
No approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to approve BEDH-E, Guidelines for Public Comment?
No approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
April 4th, 2017, meeting minutes. You were not here, so we will table the April 4th meeting minutes, please.
Okay.
And the superintendent's report.
Just a couple of quick things. We're, at the next meeting, we'll talk a little bit more about the building update, but we do have a tour for the faculty on Thursday at 3:00. We welcome you to join us. It is fast approaching completion. We're probably at 95% complete, so it's a fun time to walk through the building. When we come back from vacation, we're going to arrange for the second, third, and fourth graders in groups to go through, because they will be the third, fourth, and fifth graders in the school, and let them get to see it. And then probably in late May, we'll invite the public to come in. So we're very excited about that. It's coming along very quickly, and it's pretty amazing.
Could we be told when the kids get to go in? I'd love to go into the school and see the reaction.
Sure.
That would be fun.
Yeah, I think we'll probably do it on separate days or something with each group, but it'll be fun for them to look at.
That would be exciting. Thank you.
It'd help me to see them.
So that's going along well. On the horizon, we are pretty much covered. We haven't done the school committee and task force assignments, and that usually will follow the organizational meeting. I know, Jen, one of the things that you wanted to talk about was when that organizational meeting...
Yes, we need to come up with a date.
...might be held, because May 2nd is our next meeting, and you'll want to have that meeting before. So, and oftentimes, you've done it at like 8:00 in the morning?
Yes.
And we can meet your schedule.
Seven thirty would be better.
Do, can we plan for the week of the 24th? Would that be okay, after vacation?
Yeah, that would be a good time. So you want to aim for Tuesday or Wednesday?
That's, we have a policies meeting at 8:00 AM on Wednesday, the 26th.
We do, so why don't you have it at 7:30 and you could roll right or no?
I just don't know if I can get here at that time.
7:45?
7:45, I could do 7:45.
7:45.
I'm sorry.
And that's...
7:45 on the 26th, yes.
Where would we...
Yes. I get to wave.
I think you could meet at my office.
Your office?
Yeah, we'll use the little round table in Mike Horton and Jean Witt's office.
Sure. Okay.
We'll have to make sure that it works for Melissa.
Yes, Melissa just said, give her the date, and that was fine.
So that's Wednesday, the 26th.
Wednesday, the 26th, 7:45.
Okay. And then in May, we were talking about having a tour on May 2nd for the school committee. That's up to you. If people are going to be able to make it this Thursday, then you wouldn't need to do that, but...
Is this Thursday?
Yeah. But Dick Webb is going to be here on May 2nd, our architect, and he can take you through some of the changes. We'll have an enrollment of facilities. We'd like to do a little something different on the guidance update, not just have the same thing that we've had every year with all the guidance counselors here. John came up with a great idea to have, maybe have Andrew Vasselli come and talk about his program, which is, you know, related.
That would be nice.
I think that would be a nice new spin...
It would be.
On it.
Yeah. We haven't heard from Andrew in a while.
Right.
That's great.
Okay. And then we'll have an update on student support services, and Andrew is a part of that, too. So I think it would be a good combination of things. So we're in pretty good shape on hiring. A lot is going on, and we have, we're moving quickly, as the school committee knows. We've hired three key administrative positions in Eve Marie McNeil for the principal of our new Nantucket Intermediate School. We're delighted to have her join us. We have Kelly Cooney coming as our new EL director, someone that Jeremiah had known through his attendance at workshops and really a very accomplished person in that field. And we have Michelle Brady coming over, as you know, we've talked about that previously in the special services. So I'm very, very happy with the addition of those three people. I think John is busy with the administrative, the assistant principal to replace John Lucchini. We have a candidate coming Thursday, and there'll be an opportunity for people to meet that candidate, and I think that's another person who's quite accomplished. The assistant principal at the intermediate school, I've met with one candidate today, along with Kim and Nina and Mike Horton, and so that search is really just beginning. We would like to bring it down to, you know, two or three people that we could then have Eve Marie spend some time with. And then the, at the elementary school, Kim is working on some elementary positions, not a lot at this point, and that's a good thing, but she is with Nina, starting the interview process of fourth and fifth-grade teachers, even though they will be in the intermediate school. Again, because we want to respect that Eve Marie is a principal of the school in Franklin, and her time is limited. Then I've been interviewing art and guidance candidates for the intermediate school, so trying to get that down to two or three people that Eve Marie can sort of give her final Let's see, guidance, art, assistant principal, I guess, or the...
ELL.
The ELL is the other one, and Kim is interviewing that person, could be at the primary school, might be at the intermediate school, might work between them. I have had several guidance candidates with the Spanish-speaking background, and that was something that we had talked about, so I thought I would share that with you, and that would be a nice piece for something. At the, excuse me, at the middle school, Peter has hired a social studies teacher for seventh grade, a science teacher for seventh grade, has some good candidates, I think, for the eighth grade science and for tech integration. So those are moving along pretty well. And then John, as I said, is hoping to wrap up the assistant principal, and then has a math opening that he hopes to fill and an ELL opening. So right now, I think we're in good shape. It's a process, and if we can land our top choices, you know, then we're in a good place. And we are challenged sometimes by our geography, just as we are, we sometimes benefit from our geography, because people want to come here. So we are in pretty good shape in the hiring process.
Thank you.
And Mike, the administration that you talked about, will they all begin July 1st?
Yes, the three people that I have mentioned will start July 1st. We're working on housing, and Logan and Caitlin are, you know, working with me to make sure that everybody has that covered, because as you know, coming on July 1st is a greater challenge than coming on September 1st. So we have some options for people, and so I'm feeling like...
Great.
You know, fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Moving forward at a fast pace. Thank you, everybody, for everything. It's a lot of hard work. Tonight might be my last night as chair, so I'd like to thank everyone for the opportunity. It's been fantastic.
It's been great to have you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'll make sure they take their night off, that easy.